Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, December 12, 2023. The meetings are on Milford Cable TV and they are broadcast, so we are on TV. With that, I will open the meeting and take a motion to, for the minutes of our last meeting, which was 11:23, 23?
11:21.
11:21, I'm sorry. Because I can't read. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from 11:21, 23. Motion by Chris to accept the meeting minutes from 11:21, 23. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor of accepting the minutes will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Three with one abstention. 81p plans. Old Cedar Street LLC.
Yeah, this is the 81p that's necessary to give me up various pieces of the discontinued Old Cedar Street, the town meeting voted on. It's endorsable as submitted and all the deeds are ready for the individual parcels. The Select Board has already signed them.
Thank you.
Endorsable as you have it.
Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing not, I'll entertain a motion to, this is in Land Court, right Larry? You can sign this one?
Yeah, I can sign anything.
Not in Land Court.
Make a motion when you sign the 81p. I have Larry sign the 81p.
Motion by Babe to have Larry sign the 81p. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four. 81p for 234 Purchase Street, William Road.
Yeah, you may recall there was a variance relatively recently on the original parcels that had been approved, and this is just the follow-on plan. And again, this one's endorsable as submitted.
Comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, on these with the variance, has that been recorded before we sign the 81p?
I don't recall whether it was.
Can I answer that question?
Sure.
Josh Pannin from Gerd Helen, yes it has. It's referenced in the plan.
That's what I was going to say. I thought it was referenced in the plan.
I thought they usually are, but I just.
Yeah, it's hard, at this size, it's hard to see.
Yep.
It's some information that I have had.
Now you can get paid.
Now we can go home.
Any other questions?
Unless you want to wait for the.
Hearing not, I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the 81p for 234 Purchase Street. Sign. Have Larry sign it. Have Larry sign it, sorry. Motion by Chris to have Larry sign the 81p for 234 Purchase Street. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four. Thank you all.
Okay, let's see. All right, we're back up. Cedar Street Route 85, Dilla Street Corp.
Yep.
This is a follow-on 81p to rearrange some of the other parcels after the discontinuance. Primarily, it's to combine land on bonds parcels so that the parcel that has the plaza on it is extended all over to the other parcel that was a remnant from the discontinuance in the subdivision. And again, this is endorsable as submitted.
Comments, questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to have Larry sign the 81p.
Motion by Babe to have Larry sign the 81p. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor of having Larry sign the 81p will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four.
This is the actual Mylar for you.
For which one?
For that one that you just printed out. I think we only sent over a paper copy, so I just had that.
No, you sent a Mylar. I got, I'll check before I sign. I'll only sign one of them.
All right. Craig printed it up again.
Continued amended site plan for 146 South Main Street, New York Capital Investment Group LLC. And we have a letter in the file. On behalf of the applicant, we kindly request to continue our Planning Board public hearing scheduled for 12/12 through January 2nd. The reason for this request is to finalize the traffic study prior to our meeting with the Planning Board.
I think, I think he actually has a firm now. It sounded like they're actually working on it. Up until now, I don't think, don't think he really signed anybody up.
I just, if he doesn't have something partially close by this point in time, and us having the ability to review that and stuff, I get the feeling that I would much rather continue this to the second meeting in January because between now and then, there's going to be a lot of people out on vacation and such things, and to be able to coordinate that, I think it's going to be very difficult. So, I mean, we've been doing this back and forth, back and forth, but I would, I would rather go to the second meeting in January because I just don't have confidence that we're actually going to do it in that first meeting.
Yeah, and I don't know that he'll object much to that.
Anyways, that would be my recommendation. I don't know what the, what the interests of the board are or how they would like to handle it, but.
Would be to the 16th instead of the 2nd?
Yeah, I would like to see it continued to the 16th.
Because he also needs to go to conservation, and they haven't even filed with conservation.
They haven't? Oh, I thought he did.
Oh.
Anyway, yeah, he can do it to the 16th. He's not going to care.
I made the motion.
Make a motion, we continue to the January 16th, 2024 meeting.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Chris. Motion was by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor continuing the amended site plan review for 146 South Main Street to January 16th will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous at four. 13 Spruce Street. Oh.
Since he's not here.
You want to do?
And since we're going to be talking about the comp plan.
Yeah.
I'd suggest you go to six, and you've got the, we've got the Mylars here, you've got copies of the plans in your packet, as well as the most recent conditional approval contract. So I'd recommend you take that up next, and then Neil might get out of here decent.
I'm in no rush.
Earlier. Yeah, this wasn't his idea. This was my idea.
So we have the conditional approval, approval contract in the back of our packet for the Old Cedar Court subdivision.
Yep. Yeah, I think I forwarded the email that had the final version. We'd gone through and amended the, the stock form, no pun intended, the stock version of Form E, so that it bore, voted to this particular subdivision. So it appeared to be in order, and obviously, there are some blanks there that'll get filled in when the Mylars get recorded.
Yep. Any questions on conditional approval from the board?
So the only lot that's.
Yep.
The only lot that's on, on the.
It's the back lot, right?
Right.
It's now effectively the big lot that goes.
It's the only one that needs the frontage block of the subdivision.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and it's, it's, it's the property that stays with the subdivision.
Yep.
Because other properties are involved, and that would be part of it, so. That's why.
Yeah, the others, the other frontages are all off of Cedar Street and remain off of Cedar Street. The, this one, parcel 1A.
Is the only one that's dependent.
Right. Has its frontage off of the new subdivision, which we had approved.
Yeah, and the street, the intention of everyone is that the street's going to stay private anyway.
Yep.
This is more of a, a tracking device, on the one hand, to confirm that the subdivision is approved, and it's coded, encoded to the plan book and page of the subdivision, but also it ties in the, in actual improvements on the cul-de-sac, and that corresponds to some of the requirements in the special permit decision. But it also facilitates being able to, quote, "release the lot," so we can get a building permit, you know, tie it all together. So I think it's appropriate to do it, even though it's going to stay a private street.
Any questions, comments from the board? Hearing not, I'll entertain a motion to have the chairman sign the conditional approval contract.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Babe to have the chairman sign the conditional approval contract. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor having the chairman sign the conditional approval contract will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four. Larry, do I wait for the, for the property owner to sign and get that one, or can I sign?
I think.
I mean, I can.
I have a signed one.
You have signed one?
Yes.
I guess I can sign that one.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Can we do four now, Larry?
Well, you need to vote on the, on signing the Mylars, the approved subdivision.
Oh, the subdivision? Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I've got the Mylars, and I have the clerk's signature on each one of them for the certificate of no appeal.
Yeah.
So those are ready to go as well.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to sign the subdivision Mylars.
Make a motion to sign the Mylars.
Motion by Chris to have the board sign the subdivision Mylars. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor of signing the Mylars, subdivision Mylars, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four. So that's.
So if you want to just kind of hold off on the rest of the agenda items, we can sign the Mylars, if you want, or not.
That's fine. Get them out of, yeah. I can't imagine there's that many anyways.
I don't see anybody. I guess he's here now.
Can't be that.
The Board here.
So you guys are doing.
How many copies do we have?
Oh, I don't know, 40 or 50 pages.
Make sure.
Is it just?
The only one that doesn't.
My only sign at the top?
No, they're all in different, they're all in different parts, except for the last page.
Of course.
Each page has a signature, and they're not consistently located on the, on the plan.
I'll make sure.
Keep it. Just send them down.
Yep. Okay, now I'm seeing, now I'm seeing locations. Get the bad pen. After you look at it. That's weird.
They're all right.
They are, yes.
I tried to put a yellow sticky underneath.
Oh, that's very helpful.
I'm pretty simple-minded, so I'm pretty, I hope these are great for me to hold them.
Maybe the odd parts of me.
So this is supposed to be.
It's a whale.
Can I give it back to you?
It's D1 and D2, so.
Can I give it back to you?
It's a block, that's fine, those don't. Anything on this one? Yeah, so. These together. No problem. Just one, Joe.
Maybe I gave it back to you.
That's it.
Nope, nope. Well, it's a good thing you brought her.
I'm going to say digital.
This is.
Yeah.
There's that one. Oops, I'm sorry. Wait. Jesus, you guys. All this unnecessary stuff. Boy, you put it up there. So if you want to go back and do number four, I think Andre's here, right?
Yep.
Well, it's different than the one that you guys.
Yeah, well.
The big one's right there.
Yes.
You guys want to read them?
Yeah, all right, this works. Thank you. You had a chance to, has Tom had a chance to look at these?
Yeah, so we talked to the fire chief and the police chief are both fine with that road having to be closed. They'll have to put a detail on either end.
Hmm.
They did just mention that it's something that's going to need to get coordinated with schools as well.
Hmm.
But they were fine with that. The, the, there are spot reads showing the handicap along, I know you can't really see the numbers, but there's spot reads. My, my only concern is that it doesn't really show how that's going to blend into the existing grading. Now, it's, it's enough to, I think it's enough to say, to hold them to, it needs to meet handicap access.
Thank you very much.
I just think that I would have felt better if the, if the grading tied in.
Yeah, I think you have to, to be honest. I mean, you know, you can, you can show a handicap accessible path, but that doesn't mean that you can actually grade to that path, so, you know, you have to show the, we need to see what the grading looks like.
I mean, it is relatively.
Flat.
It is relatively flat. Oh, over there, it's not. If it was, if it was much steeper, I would completely understand. And it, it's not flat enough that it does, that it already meets it.
Right.
So, plus, the other thing is, they, they're showing the access aisle, and, so my other comment was, to me, I was expecting the landscape island to extend all the way to the end of that handicap, or handicap spaces.
Hmm.
But obviously, that access aisle is on the, what I was expecting to be the curb side.
Hmm.
So, in that location, the, the slope is actually much flatter, so it, it really does make sense from that perspective.
Hmm.
Whereas if they were going up towards the top, it, it just is a little less, there's more slope, so I would be more concerned about tying the, the grades in. So, one of the things that I would like, and I, and I think this is something that you could potentially just reference on the plan where, where you expect the landscape island to be, because when it does come to me doing an inspection at the end, I would need to know where you guys wanted it.
Well, yeah, typically, when you submit a plan that shows landscaping, you can actually tell where it is. So there's no, it just, it just has a vague reference, and you can't tell where it starts or stops. So, to Liz's point, if you're going to leave the access aisle out in front of the parking spaces, then the landscaping island, which needs to have the pavement and whatever else is under it removed and replaced with real soil and live plants, that that, that landscape area would be L-shaped and wrapped right around, so that it's 10, whatever it says there, it's 10 foot wide at the west end, but once you get past that first handicap space, then it narrows down.
Five.
To five feet wide to go over to the edge of the driveway. But there's no, there's no easterly edge of the landscape area. So the plan isn't drawn correctly, no matter where the landscape area starts or stops, because you can't tell.
Yeah, I, I think, and I don't see it here. I mean, I'd like to see what the detail is also, because obviously, there's no, there's no curb at that entranceway, so we're coming down from a curbed parking lot down into that. I'd like to see what that, what the intent of that is, what that looks like. I mean, you know, I'm sure they can make it work, but.
Yeah, so you'd have a kind of an L-shaped landscaped area where you actually remove the pavement, and you remove all the junk that's underneath it.
Right, but they're not.
And put soil and.
They're not showing any curb, to your point.
Right.
Like, I wouldn't, I, I guess, again, from an inspection standpoint, I wouldn't expect to see curb out there. I would just expect to see the.
Edge of the pavement.
Edge of the pavement and the edge of the landscape island if.
Yeah, so you would, you would at minimum, if the pavement's sufficient, do bumper stops on.
Right, I was going to say, if there is no curb there, then we need bumper stops, which is not Joe.
Right, because there are bumper stops on the north row facing the little house, so that's, he didn't show those there either, so that's, I'll just draw them on this one, then he can, since we seem to have to draw pictures every time.
And I did talk to Andre earlier, and I think some of the issue here is that it was initially kind of a straightforward site plan that a, a land surveyor is capable of doing, and then, once you start dealing with regrading and moving spaces, then it really should have gone to an engineer, and that's something that he understands now and, and can certainly do moving forward, but that's.
Well, I think I.
He didn't intentionally get down this path.
Yeah, I guess.
So that's a joke.
I guess the landscape, you know, even, even that, I think it should be defined, and we should have an idea of what's getting put in there. I mean, there's no, we also require a landscaping detail.
Yeah.
There's nothing here on that, so, especially in this location, because to be honest, I, you know, I, I, I think we need to be careful as to what anybody wants to put in there or not. You know, there's, you're not going to get trees to grow there, I can tell you that, so I don't know. Even though we require it, I'd be more apt to say low-growing vegetation may be a more appropriate.
Yep.
Item in here than trying to plant some trees in there, because I think we're just going to end up with dead trees.
Okay.
And probably, you know, I, I think it would be better, and would, would keep the area a little more open in the site, the site view's a little bit better if we don't have trees in that location, to be honest. So I, I'd like to see a landscaping plan with some low-growth plantings in there, to be honest. But, that's me. But I, we definitely need something so that we can at least discuss it.
So you want proposed contours?
Yep. Details on, you know, if that's not curb, then they need to show the, the curb stops or something in, in there as to what they're, what they're going to do there.
Of curb or curb stops.
Um.
Detail of.
Landscape.
Henscape.
Also, I'd like to see a note on the plan stating that the, in the landscape area, the concrete underneath will be repro, removed. There's like, probably eight, 10 inches of concrete there. You just can't put loom on top of it and expect stuff to grow.
Yeah, that's it, that, that area is all paved.
That was Joe's brother that came with the concrete there left over at night, so.
So is this in the context of, of bringing a plan back to C, or just making the changes on the plan and letting us verify it and?
Well, no, I, I think we need to discuss it, at least in the landscape plan and stuff. I think it should come back.
Okay.
I guess I'm, I'm looking, is there, is there a detail of the access aisle in terms of what a cross-section of that looks like?
Say, a cross-section.
Thickness of pavement and whatever. I mean, I would assume we're using standard, but considering what's out there, is the intent to dig around what's out there? Because it is, I don't know if it meets handicap accessibility, and they plan on leaving it in, they're going to pull it out, are they going to re-put something down to, you know, meet the grades? I don't know.
So the, the dash line, the dark dash line, is their intent to remove what's there, regrade? I think when you actually draw the contours in, that might.
Well, you're not going to be able to, yeah.
Yeah, that, you might not be able to meet what you need to within those areas. Plus, and the sewer stuff is all going to go right through there anyway, and, and that's going to go up into the back where the, well, not the back, but up by where the, so they're going to be cutting out more pavement in this anyway.
Yeah, it's all going to be torn up.
I think they're going to be cutting up most of, yeah. Most of it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you need to show that detail in there.
So the detail, really, it's a detail of the pay, of what, where you're, where you're replacing pavement, the thickness, which is standards.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, once you, once you draw, once you have your contours in, your, your limit of work changes, obviously, so that, that'll just show up.
It might make sense for you to just reach out to D and L and see if.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he shot a lot of that already.
Yeah, they must have enough information.
He already did, right, he already did. He incorporated, I think he could do it pretty easily.
For the tank plan, yeah.
Yeah, just, exactly.
Actually, I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure what the chief, he wanted, he doesn't want to, he wants to close from Prentice Street to.
Yeah, not close Prentice, close right before Prentice.
I'm not sure what that buys him, to be totally honest, to put him into a doo-loop. You go down Prentice Street to a one-way street, back up and come back around, where are you going? You're still not going.
He wants to close it at Prentice?
Wants to close it at Prentice and keep Spruce open at the corner. I would not do that. I would put a sign up that says, "Spruce Street closed," so people don't go.
Close Spruce before.
Well, just for local traffic.
Yeah.
You know, have, have a, you know, local traffic only, Spruce Street closed at Prentice or something.
It goes into a, girl is what, one-way, too?
That goes back onto.
Yeah, it goes to a one-way that comes back up. So that's what I'm saying. The only person who would want to do this is somebody that lives on Prentice or lives on the one-way, which is possible, and there's no reason why they can't go that way.
Even if you close it up at the thing and just.
Yeah, just have it for local traffic.
Yeah, if you're going to have a detail there.
That's the appropriate way of doing it.
But that's, at least he's contacted them, and whatever they.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, well, works out, they can work something out, but that would be my recommendation to vote the chief, answer the fire chief, is to close it, it's Spruce, we don't want people going down the street, so they can, yeah, so they can go around in circles for an hour.
Well, there's, there's the cleaners there and the banks there.
Right, yeah. So, local service, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's manageable, just got to be a pain.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be that long that they actually have it closed either. It's not, like, we're talking weeks here.
Yeah. The thing, the thing that I, I guess, can, most concerned.
concrete underneath will be repro, removed, there's like probably eight, 10 inches of , uh, concrete there. You just can't put loom on top of it and expect stuff to grow.
Yeah, that's it, that, that area is all paved.
That was Joe's brother that came with the concrete there leftover at night, so...
So is this in the context of, of bringing a plan back to C or just making the changes on the plan and letting us verify it and...
Well, no, I, I think we need to discussion, at least in the landscape plan and stuff, I think it should come back.
Okay.
Um, I guess I'm, I'm looking, is there, is there a detail of the access aisle in terms of, uh, what a cross-section of that looks like?
Say a cross-section.
Thickness of pavement and whatever, I mean, I would assume we're using standard, but considering what's out there, is the intent to dig around what's out there, 'cause it is, I don't know if it meets handicap accessibility and they plan on leaving it in, they're gonna pull it out, are they gonna re-put something down to, you know, meet the grades, I don't know.
Yeah, so the, it, the dash line, the dark dash line, is their intent to remove what's there, regrade? Now, I think when you actually draw the contours in, that might...
Well, you're not gonna be able to, yeah.
Yeah, that, you might not be able to meet what you need to within those areas, plus, um, and the, the sewer, uh, stuff is all gonna go right through there anyway, and, and that's gonna go up into the back where the, uh, well, not the back, but up by where the, um, so they're gonna be cutting out more pavement in this anyway.
Right, yep.
It's all gonna be torn up.
I think they're gonna be cutting up most of, yeah.
Everything's gonna be...
Most of it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you need to show that detail in there.
So the detail, really, it's a, a detail of the pa, of what, where you're, where you're replacing pavement, the thickness, which is standards.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, once you, once you draw, once you have your contours in, your, your limit of work changes, obviously, so that, that'll just show up.
It, it might make sense for you to just reach out to D and L and see if...
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause he shot a lot of that already.
Yeah, they must have enough information, yeah.
He already did, right, he already did, he incorporated, it, it, I think he could do it pretty easily.
For the tank plan, yeah.
Yeah, to, just, exactly.
Actually, I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure what the chief, he wanted, he, he doesn't wanna, he wants to close from Prentice Street to...
Yeah, not close Prentice, close right before Prentice.
I'm not sure what that buys him, to be totally honest, it puts him into a do-loop. You go down Prentice Street to a one-way street, back up and come back around, where do you, you go and you're still not going in?
Wants to close it at Prentice?
Wants to close it at Prentice and keep Spruce open at the corner, I would not do that, I would put a sign up that says Spruce Street closed, so people don't go...
Close Spruce before...
Well, just for local traffic.
Yeah.
You know, have, have a, you know, local traffic only, Spruce Street closed at Prentice or something.
Goes into a, girl is what, one way too?
Yeah, that goes back on to...
Yeah, goes to a one-way that comes back up. So that's what I'm saying, the only person who would wanna do this is somebody that lives on Prentice or lives on the one-way, which is possible, and there's no reason why they can't go that way.
Even if you close it up at the thing and just...
Yeah, just have it for local traffic.
Yeah, if you're gonna have a detail there.
That's the appropriate way of doing it.
But that's, at least he's contacted them and whatever they just...
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, well, works out, they can work something out, but that would be my recommendation to both the chief, answer the fire chief, is to close it, it's Spruce, we don't want people going down the street, so they can, yeah, so they can go around in circles for an hour.
Well, there's, there's the cleaners there and the banks there.
Right, yeah, so, local service, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's manageable, just gotta be a pain.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be that long that they actually have it closed either, it's not, like, we're talking, uh, weeks here.
Right.
The thing, the thing that I, I guess, can, most concerned about is the buses trying to, I don't know that that corner up, uh, at...
They, they, yeah, I, I would, I would think that school...
I don't know if they're gonna be able to leave it.
Yeah, I would think that schools, you don't want them going down, in fact, they need to redo their bus stops when this is happening, because I don't think they're gonna be able to get down Prentice Street and make the corners.
Right.
If they're going down there.
Who would be responsible to contact Jim Legor then on that?
The transportation.
Well, Jim Legor's our, is the school's transportation director, so...
Yeah, but when they go to close the...
So when they go to close the street, just...
Go check with Scotts, 'cause Scott gives them the road open for a minute.
Okay, just wanna make sure that they close that loop, or I wasn't sure, again, how that communication...
It's not good.
They should go...
That's what I'm worried about, yeah. Let's put it that way, that, that's not, that has not traditionally been a very good, so, um, as we approve this, we probably need to hang something on this to, to indicate that...
I would say notify our office, and then I can make sure that we, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, yeah, the, the buses can move around, there's other ways.
Contract is supposed, supposed to...
Doing this is coming back the second, you're gonna be enough time?
Depends on, I mean, if, it, it's not a lot, it's not a lot of work, so it's just a matter of whether or not he, I mean...
And just let me know what it is too, that you guys have.
Well, you'll find out right now.
Yeah, well, last time, we didn't find out these things as well, so I just need to know, 'cause, 'cause then I'll have enough time to get all these bullet points out, you know?
Different, different members of your side of the fence knew, so, it's just that nothing got done, that's why we're still doing it.
It wasn't, it wasn't addressed last meeting, these things, these points, so...
Well, some of these, we couldn't address until we saw what we had.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's tough to, it's tough to know where, where the handicap accessible route is when it's not on the plan to begin with, so, until we see it, we can't make a comment on it.
And I tried to, I tried to explain that, uh, but at any rate, so you wanna just continue it to the second, and if things are done, at least you can act on it.
I think there's a chance it could be done by then, so...
If there's a chance.
I'll reach out to D and L and talk about it.
Yeah, and as it goes forward, as far as that, I, you know, we probably, 'cause traditionally, I don't know that Scott's reached out to, to Jim.
Or the Transportation Department.
Transportation, no matter who's there, and, uh, that, that, in this particular case, I think it's critical.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know the route, I don't know that they're on Prentice Ave, I don't know if there's stops there or not to begin with, it may not be an issue, but if it is, they need to, at least for, for whatever they're doing it, however many days, a couple days, move those stops off of there, I think, and just not have, you know, have the kids walk to some other location, 'cause they'll, they'll never be able, especially with cars at Paffey, you're not gonna be able to make the turns that are on that street.
Well, that, yeah, then that area gets highly congested, whether it's the morning drop-off routine or, or, or at the pickup, you know, and it still probably would be impacted by Memorial School, which is, you know, just around the corner, so...
Yeah, but, you know, we can deal with that going forward.
That'd be great.
So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue till the first meeting in January, second?
I'm with that motion.
Motion by Dave to have the meeting continue until January 2nd, 2024. I have a second.
I'll second, just one, quick, uh, anything that, for requirements as far as additional lighting, lighting requirements within that parking lot that we need to see?
No, it's the building.
They, they've, they're showing proposed lighting on the front of the building.
Correct, more on the parking lot area, I wasn't sure if that's something we need to address or not.
I, I think the, I mean, I don't consider that area to be dark, I guess, so I'm, we didn't ask for a formal, um, for a formal lighting plan like we would on a brand-new site. Um, I, my, just my professional opinion, I guess, I'm not concerned that it's an unsafe parking lot, and I actually wanted to see the proposed lighting more because I wanted to make sure they weren't gonna put too much up, especially with, it's a somewhat residential...
Right, and lighting, the lighting on the building is gonna need to be shielded anyway.
Right.
The only thing I, the only thing I could see is that on the, uh, would be actually, what, the west side, on that side of the building, if there was one, one building-mounted light pointed out into the parking lot would be all that I would, I would think at this point, 'cause Prentice has street lighting, no use in killing the thing, but I, you know, I think we have one along the west side of the building that shoots out into that parking lot, it's not gonna get into anybody's, it, by the time it gets to the, uh, to the church on the other side, it'll be pretty well diffused and it can be pointed down, I, I would think that we wanna see, you know, a light location on the building at that point, but other than that, I don't, I, I don't wanna put poles up because it's just gonna take up more room in the thing, so I definitely don't want that.
Um, and you want a detail of the light too?
Yeah, just a...
So that we know that it's down.
Just a sheet call-out to know what it is. Chris made a second, any other comments, questions? With that, I'll take a vote, all those in favor of continuing to January 2nd, 2024 will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, and for will continue until January 2nd, see you then.
Okay.
The last thing we have is the update on the comprehensive plan. Um, if you wanna go over where we are, Larry, we've been, uh, working on trying to get a contract, uh, language set up, uh, which now is, is pretty close, I believe, that the intent is to have it go to the Board of Selectmen on their meeting coming up on Monday night, for them to sign.
Yep, yeah, the town council, it has approved it, uh, well, he's approved it as the form and, uh, content to the extent that it's appropriately addressing what we wanted it to, so, uh, it seems to me that it does. So the contract portion, the first three or four pages there, uh, are in order, so we should be able to get, uh, we should be able to get the vote from the Select Board Monday, as Joe said, uh, so that part will be signed, uh, the next sheet's, uh, an inclusionary statement, uh, that, that MAPC likes to do, um, I don't think it makes any difference one way or the other, um, I mean, it doesn't affect any of the stuff we're gonna be doing, it doesn't affect the contract, doesn't affect the scope, so, uh, Rick and I'll sign that, and then Exhibit A is the actual scope of work, uh, and Joe and I had been, uh, going back and forth with him, uh, as we reported, uh, the last few meetings. So, I, I think they, um, you know, pared it down a little bit, uh, addressed some of our concerns, made sure they're focusing on the right thing, um, the only thing I would note, um, it's actually more of a typo, uh, they're still referring to the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee, uh, as an advisory committee or a steering committee, uh, alternately, so they're gonna correct that, uh, so that it's consistent with what the board's already done, I sent them copies, uh, which are actually later on in the packet here, of the memos that we'd sent out to the various boards, and then the memo that we got back from the Select Board, because they've already, um, chosen a representative, um, so MAPC's gonna, uh, go through and tweak that so that it's referring to the committee with the proper name, and the proper number of members. But other than that, I don't know if any of you have seen anything, um, that jumps out at you that they didn't address properly, or you'd still like to have them changed, um, we can still do that, uh, it'd be preferable to have changes made before the Select Board actually signs the contract, uh, but, you know, that actually wouldn't need to happen until Monday, 'cause they're not gonna sign it until Monday night.
And we did, Larry and I did have a discussion, there are some, some items in the scope that, um, MAPC, you know, had put in the scope, their, their normal part of the comprehensive plan that both Larry and I felt were probably less important to the Milford Comprehensive Plan than they would be at other locations, uh, but they feel more comfortable, I, I believe, 'cause we've had this discussion with them to a little extent, that, that those things be put in, but it, it's gonna be our job to make sure we minimize the time that they spend on those particular items and try to, to direct them towards areas that we want them to spend, but they, they did feel that they at least, to some cursory level, had to look at those things, so they left them in the scope, so that's why, there are some items that you might say, oh, jeez, why are we doing that, uh, that may be the reason for those, but at the end of the day, it's gonna be our job to, uh, to herd the cattle and make sure that they go in the direction that we want them to.
Yeah, I think that comes under the category of, of what, professional integrity.
Yeah, yes.
They, they wanna make sure that it, you know, they're covering all the bases that they would normally cover, no matter where it is.
Yep. There are copies of the letters that got sent to each of the boards that we had asked to have a member appointed, as Larry indicated, and, uh, Selectmen have already indicated that the Select Board member, Mas Kelly, will be their representative, and will wait on the Conservation Commission and the Finance Committee as that moves forward.
Conservation meets next week, so I would imagine they'll choose somebody.
Yeah, we might, yeah, we might have somebody come in.
Obviously, you know, if this is signed Monday, I don't, I don't foresee a whole hell of a lot done before the end of the year anyway, unless you mean maybe...
Well, not in terms of, you know, you schedule a kickoff meeting where you can get to meet the staff and everybody sometime, hopefully in January, but probably the second meeting, I would think, um, at least that's what I would suggest, and, uh, between now and then, um, you know, I need to get tied down who their principal contact would be like for the GIS, because I need to notify, um, you know, our contractor with the GIS, uh, who that person is so they can have full access to our GIS, even though they already have full access to some of the features or some of the data, because it comes directly from Mass GIS to begin with, uh, but the other stuff that's our own, uh, you know, they still need the authorization, so I can get that stuff set up and, you know, get them maybe some other reports and things to, as background to get them going, so...
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
None.
Anybody have any other new business?
I just got, uh, it was brought to my attention by a couple of people that somebody was looking to put the brewery and they wanted to put it down in the downtown area, a brewery, uh, drinking area.
Mm-hmm.
And I looked it up in the zoning bylaw, there's, it's not allowed, there's no allowable use in it.
Just the drinking part?
Yeah.
Not, not the brewing?
What I would like to do is to add two, two more, uh, descriptions of a thing, one distillery brewery, and have it the same it is now, permitted in the IC, the IB, the IC, CC, that.
So you're saying to add two definitions?
Add two definitions, yes, well, not definitions, but uses.
Uses to the table.
Yeah, to the table, to the button.
Yeah, so we'll have to, probably have to define them.
You probably have to define them as well, yeah.
Define them as well, yes.
And then add one drinky, uh, distillery brewery serving.
Right.
Or something, or something like that.
Yep.
Have it permitted in the IC, C thing, and then the CA, CB have a special permit. So this way here, when we come, when they come for, before the hearing for the special permit, we can see how much drinking area, you know, if you're gonna have a brewery in two, in two stools, that's not gonna fly.
Yeah.
But if you have a, a, a good area, so, again, the idea is we do, we're not, we don't wanna increase the track, truck, traffic in the area and all that, so I think that would be a way to do it, and I think that would be good for the downtown area.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Well, the, the people that have called me, and there've been different groups at different times, were looking for a brew pub, so they wanna have a distillery that actually has a full pub along with it.
Yep.
Uh, so, so it may, there may be like three or four or even five things to define, and then sort, that'll help us sort out which zoning districts to allow those things in in the chart, as well as, as you say, some of them need to be special permits and not just as of right site plan stuff.
Yeah, again, I think, and the CA, CB does, definitely need, it's gotta go through a special permit, so...
Yeah, 'cause right now, the closest thing you can get, uh, is, um, I forget how we classified it, I thought I stuck my, uh, file on there, huh, it's not, um, but it's a, it's a manufacturing processing.
Right.
Right.
That's, that's the only place you can find that covers what a, what a brewery would be.
That's exactly what I looked up, when I looked up, that's what I concluded.
Yeah.
Again, I, I'm bringing it up now, so...
Well, I think it, I think it's a question...
It, it could be something that you could do over the, the time before the...
In my spare time.
Yeah, but it's, it's something you don't have to rush into.
Yeah.
Because we got a town meeting come up, we got the Maytown meeting, so you got plenty of time to, kinda...
Or the Falltown meeting.
Then you'd have plenty, I suppose.
Well, but, yeah, I'll check.
Just went through the Falltown meeting, so, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that would, yeah, that would be a good idea, I mean, I, I think obviously that would, that would help, uh, allow downtown to have more varied uses that are, you know, current right now, people are, are doing that type of thing, so maybe that'll, uh, free up a couple spots to...
Somebody asked about the home that, uh, Milford Nat Building, and, you know, nobody approached me, they asked somebody else, and somebody asked me, and I said, jeez, let me look it up, and I've been thinking about it and doing it, I, it's a great idea, it'll help the downtown and help some of the owners downtown.
Yep.
If possibly, uh, do it, so...
Yeah, I mean, it, it, doing that, it's more like a specialty brewery, uh, it's not like a, a real brewery where it's, you know, I'm from Dubuque, so we got, you know, Dubuque Star Brewery, it was a real brewery, uh, you know, it's a big operation.
I used to work, I used to work at the Cowan Brewery all the time, so...
Like Joe said, the, the specialty ones are, are bigger thing right now, so...
Well, they're...
It makes sense to address it.
But they're not a large installation.
No, no, and that's, it's, it's...
It's a big deal, interesting, but it's not...
Those are some of the things that, that you could, you know, we could look into as to how we do that, because, I mean, the, there could be a setup where they can only sell on-site, they're not selling, you know, if you go to this, like, Startline in Hockington, they make enough to, they, they sell elsewhere, they all just sell it there, but maybe you're only looking to, you know, if they're in the downtown area, we're not expecting anything big, we want it to be small.
We want it to be boutique.
They want, yeah, they, that type of thing, so, so I, I think there's a lot of questions and there's a lot of things that we could look at as to what is right or wrong, so that would be good if you can get, you know, if you can go through it, Larry and...
I mean, even grassroots, grassroots is large enough to, to sell a little bit up, but they're not a, a major manufacturing offsite there.
Yeah.
You know, it's...
Yep.
Right.
Anything else? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Chris to adjourn, do I have a second?
Oh.
Wait a minute.
Uh, I'm getting back to my, my thing, we gotta do something with this, uh, we'll go with charging stations, I mean, it's, it's, they're pushing, they're pushing electric cars, now they're gonna give people seven, six or $7,000 where you buy a car at the dealer, they're gonna give you money, so people are gonna be buying these cars, and we're gonna have to do something, so that's something we gotta look into, uh, soon.
Put that on the list.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure that the government is actually doing that, they, their, their, their plan of that is, is highly flawed.
Well, it's supposed to go in effect January 1st, so...
Well, I believe there's already a plan in, however, the, is, I believe there's only two models of electric vehicles that, that they actually will allow getting a, call it a rebate, call it whatever the hell you want, tax incentive or whatever, there's only two vehicles that meet that requirement, because you have to have, I forget whether it's 50, there has a certain percentage of, of the electrical vehicle that has to be made in the USA, I believe, not assembled, but made, and then the other one is, the vehicle can't have a MSRP of over $70,000, so any of the big ones, any of the big electric vehicles don't meet that requirement, so it's, it's a, it...
Yeah.
They wanna push it, but yet, they don't wanna push it, so, I'm not sure where that's gonna go, but anyways, it, it's, it's a conversation piece that we certainly can look at.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause right now, there's nothing, you allow them in any parking lot, provided that it doesn't eat into the parking requirement, uh, so from that standpoint, it doesn't need to be addressed in terms of being able to do it, it's just whether you wanna address allowing a percentage of the required parking to be allocated for this other thing that may not have anything at all to do with the business, so, but, but right now, they can do it, as we've seen it...
And I, I think similarly, it might be worthwhile looking at the, um, and the, the grocery stores have been, and Target, they're, they're all starting to do this drive-up, drive-up spaces that are...
Well, we do site plans for them.
Well, right, so, um, Stop &amp; Shop had come and they didn't have... Well, right, so Stop &amp; Shop had come and they didn't have the parking, I believe they didn't have the parking spaces for us to do it.
Right.
And I was there the other day, and I actually took pictures with my camera, because there were at least six cars parked in the fire lane, waiting to get their groceries loaded up. So, I think it's something that needs to be enforced.
But there's no enforcement, there's, other than-
That's right.
Other than parking in a handicap spot, there's no, there's no laws, fines, or anything else.
Well, unfortunately, there's also no plans by them. I mean, they could, they could easily do that and not, and not piss me off whatsoever by going out the back door and doing them, and it wouldn't affect anybody, but they don't want to do that, because they set up their, their thing where everybody from there comes out the front door, and it was like, "Why didn't you set it out going out the back door?" Then I wouldn't care. But, you know, because everybody came when we did that, and I'll never do it again in terms of approving a site plan with that much of a parking reduction, because that parking lot is crowded most of the time, and you go behind Stop &amp; Shop and there isn't one car there.
I've driven here a million times.
And they can easily, they can easily adjust it by just doing that, and I wouldn't, you want to have people come, have them go around back, put the lane out back, and, you know, Bob's your uncle is great, but they don't want to do that. You know, no, we want to do it out front, and unfortunately, we don't have the enforcement that we really need, because that shouldn't happen. You know, they shouldn't be parked in the fire lane, and it makes that, it makes that parking lot, which is difficult to get around with, you know, regardless of whether there's a fire or not, is difficult to get around with even more difficult. But, yeah, they're, I mean, that usage, those types of usages, I think we need to address in the bylaw, in terms of parking and what we, what we say or don't say. If they're going to have that type of business, we need to, we need to at least account for it somehow.
That's, yeah, that was kind of my point, and it's not, those are becoming more popular, and so they have, they're taking up more than, than the veteran spaces and the, but, you know, those kind of all fall into that same-
Yeah.
Go back to the old thing with the rollers that came out in the car.
Yeah, yeah.
That was before my time.
Well, it's not like the E V thing is going to-
Remember that joke?
Yeah. It's going to rise to the level of needing to be the same as a gas station, because they're trying to disperse them.